Good morning, everyone, or good evening, everyone, I should say.
It's all right.
I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Mrs. Burns, roll call, please.
Mr. Congdon.
Here.
Ms. Boyle.
Here.
Mr. Feather.
Here.
Mrs. Hollenback.
Present.
Mr. Morris is absent. Mr. Parentino.
Here.
Mr. Rudy.
Here.
Mr. Santa.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
A. Quarm is present.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements, Mrs. Burns?
No announcements.
No announcements. Prior to tonight's board meeting, we met in an executive session this evening to discuss matters of employment. Superintendent's report. Mr. Jones, please.
Good evening. A couple of these are reminders. I've already announced them here, but the Harlem Wizards will be visiting Nishamani High School on Saturday, April 29th, and there's a team of local Nishamani educators will be on the other side.
You did, right?
No, 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 no.
You told us.
Next item. I forget if I announced it, but I did include it in my report here formally, that Brooke Lesser, health and physical education teacher and the department chair at Pequeston Middle School, was just named earlier this month, Teacher of the Year for the Middle School Southeastern Division of the Pennsylvania Association for Health and Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance. Wow. That's a lot to say. Congratulations to Brooke. We appreciate her leadership day-to-day. It's nice to have some of our strong educators also recognized outside the walls of our schools. There was a really nice volunteer project that was done between the Nishamani High School students and Middletown Township. Students gathered at the Idlewood Preserve behind the high school on Saturday morning, April 1st. This is a number of our students, along with some of our faculty members, for the First Action to Save Idlewood Day. The group included students from the Nishamani High School AP Environmental Science Program. They listened to a 15-minute program educational presentation and then proceeded to head into the preserves with shovels, rakes, wheelbarrows, gloves, and for some spring cleaning, and it's part of a $20,000 grant from the EPA. And there's some matching donations from Middletown Township Parks and Recreation for that program, and that was the first of some multiple efforts that were going to take place. So that was a nice, community-connected event for us here at Nishamani. Two reminders. This week, we have the STEAM Expo Thursday night, 6:30 to 8:30 at the high school, for our younger and anyone else, and all of you as parents as well, are certainly hopeful that you'll be out to see that event. We had a speaker from the public encourage people to get out to that event, 6:30 to 8:30 Thursday at the high school. And then the following Thursday, April 27th, is the Nishamani Health Fair. This year, it's going to be at the Fertabar Elementary School. So that's a 6:30 to 8:30 event the following. So you have your next two Thursday nights taken care of in terms of your entertainment. All of you who are coming out to board meetings can now come out Thursday nights as well and have some more entertainment. Chromebooks have been rolled out through a grant program into third and fourth grades, or at least the process has started. So every elementary school, every elementary school has at least a Chromebook card in one third grade, one fourth grade class before the school year ends. All the teachers in third and fourth grade will have that card in their possession in their classroom, and the goal will be to be ready to go come September. So it's a good opportunity to kind of get a jump start on that process. We thank Ms. Christie and our technology department for working with Dr. Hancock and starting that process. There was a music award that you might have seen on our Facebook page where Nishamani was recognized as one of a little over 500 districts in the United States as a best community for music education, and we know that. We know that we do a really nice job here with our music program. I see some band uniforms off to my left, so I think we're going to be talking about music a little bit later tonight. But it's kind of nice to get that stamp of approval from somebody from the outside as well. And so there's only, there are less than a handful of schools in Bucks County have that designation this year, and so we're proud here at Nishamani that we're able to talk about music, but now we can talk about it with some outside recognition as well. And so that's really nice, and we're actually hoping to do a little bit more with that at a future meeting here. We have 25 high school students who are going to be participating in the Pennsylvania Free Enterprise Week. It's a program in the summer, a week-long program, where they'll have an active role in operating simulated businesses, and they'll learn about career opportunities. That's a really great experience. Whenever high school kids, there's a lot of these high school opportunities for students to get away for like a week's time, and those are always very powerful, impactful experiences. And so I thank the high school faculty members who connect our students to those kinds of opportunities, and this is just one example, and it's a good example. And then finally, I wanted to talk just briefly about the fact that you're going to see some advertisement this month about our preschool program here at Nishamani. Very quietly, for the last 10 years, we've been operating preschool, and it's through a grant opportunity through the state. It's called pre-K Counts. But also, most recently, the Head Start operation here in Bucks County has shifted into the Nishamani community, into our old Lower South Elementary School building. And so the Bucks County Intermediate Unit running Head Start, we're going to partner with them with our pre-K Counts program, and we're actually making an application to grow that program. We now have two classrooms of preschool opportunities, 17 kids in a classroom, 34 students. If we're successful with our expansion grant, we'll have two more classrooms. We're going to try to position them on either side of the school community, but for our two existing classrooms, we're going to move them into the Lower South Building with the Bucks County IU as the partner. It's a new partner for us, but we really think it's going to be able to maximize our opportunity to advertise to our community the Head Start opportunities, the pre-K Count opportunities, but also we have at the high school opportunities for parents of, any parent here, to engage with our high school students who also run a really nice preschool opportunity. So we have three avenues of approach. We're going to advertise them very carefully, get a waiting list for that new opportunity if it comes around. We have to wait on the state. Governor Wolf's budget had $75 million of extra dollars for preschool, and I think the, I believe it's a Republican House passed $25 million. So it's somewhere between $25 million and $75 million new dollars that may come towards preschool, but even with $25 million, we're hoping to secure enough to get 34 more seats. And so that'll be exciting for us. That's my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We're going to move to public comment. Once again, please state your name, may I reside, your profession. We limit this portion of the comments to three minutes, and please, no personal attacks. Mrs. Burns, please.
Beth Sinagoga.
My name is Beth Sinagoga. I live in Langhorne Barrow. I'm a teacher at Maple Point Middle School. I have a son in Maple Point in the seventh grade and a son who's a freshman at the Nishamani High School. Both my boys participate in our district music program. I'm here tonight with the Nishamani High School instrumental music boosters to request the school board's purchase of new uniforms for our award-winning Nishamani High School marching band. We've brought two uniforms with us tonight, a current marching band uniform and a sample of the proposed custom newly-designed uniform. The current uniforms have served us very well for the past 12 years. They are painstakingly cared for by our boosters. They're distributed to students, inspected, recollected, inspected again, and put away with each wearing. They repair them if necessary, in-house when possible, and often supplement for size when necessary to make sure each child is fitted properly. Our present uniforms are outdated. They're no longer current in style nor in material. They're bulky, they're very warm in hot weather, and believe it or not, they are not warm in the cold. They're worn through football season, and they're also worn when our students march in the Pendel and Langhorne Memorial Day parades. The new uniform material is much more breathable and will allow for more flexibility in multiple layering for our children. They're made of extreme-dry and extreme-wool fabric, and these fabrics are known for their durability, for being lightweight, and their moisture-management characteristics. We know that the new uniforms are a big investment, but we think one that is well-deserved. The students work very hard and give their all in every performance. They represent our district with great pride and with musical excellence and are well-deserving of new uniforms. I thank you for your consideration.
Jennifer Hunt.
I live in Langhorne, and my daughter is a freshman at Nishamani High School. As Beth mentioned, our uniforms are 12 years old. In the past 22 years, we've had two uniforms. Definitely, they've lived a full life and have shown their durability and longevity. New uniforms show Nishamani is investing and enhancing their music program. Our kids have earned their rank and deserve to look the part of one of the top-performing schools in our area. Nishamani most recently won, as Mr. John, Johnson, Jones, sorry, Jones, had mentioned, that we won the National Association of Marketers Foundation Award for Best Communities in the Music Education. This means out of over 13,000 districts across the United States, we're the top 3.8%. This title is held by schools that demonstrate exceptionally high commitment and access to music education. What better way to look the part than to get a fresh new look? Nishamani's football team gets tremendous press and exposure and well-deserved. Our marching band stands right beside them in their support and spirit. These new uniforms would convey a look that is polished, professional, and modern. Our competition, as shown in these photos, has updated relevant uniforms. To me, as a new band parent, this shows that these schools are promoting and investing in their music programs. We need to do the same. We want our kids to be Nishamani proud, not just for their performance, but for their appearance too, which is also part of the judging process. The uniforms we've chosen are not a style risk or trendy. They continue to be durable, versatile, and the hems are adjustable. The lighter-weight fabric will allow the kids to breathe, be less bulk to transport to competitions, while still keeping them warm on those cold nights in the field. New uniforms are a win for the students, the music program, and will beam Nishamani pride. Listening to these kids perform gives me goosebumps. Enhancing this performance with new uniforms would give it that wow factor it deserves. Thank you.
Julianne Schwab.
I live in Levittown, and currently, I'm the junior drum major in the Nishamani High School marching band. One of the things we talk a lot about in marching band, we say "eyes of pride," and it's about how we carry ourselves. That's a big part of our performance. It's not just how we sound, it's how we hold our heads up, how we look, and a big part of that is with our uniforms. You know, we have these really heavy uniforms, they're a little outdated, and if we had new ones, we would feel good, we would look good, and I think that would help us out a lot. We do take really good care of our uniforms. Mr. Lipton and all of our volunteer parents make sure of that. You know, they have served us well, but we are looking for an upgrade. We've seen a lot of schools around us that we see at festivals, that we see at competitions. We've noticed they've gotten new uniforms in the past couple of years, and especially for some bands, you notice, you know, one year you see them, you know, they're pretty good, and then the next year, you see they have a new uniform, and like, wow, it's a whole new band. We think we've been doing pretty well the past few years. Our shows have changed a lot, like the type of music we play, the drill we perform, it's not the same as it was 12 years ago, and our uniforms should reflect that. And in closing, I'd like to say a quote from a famous drum major, George N. Parks. He said, "A band is not proud because it performs well, it performs well because it is proud." And I think new uniforms that fit our show and fit our times would help us be more proud and perform even better. Thank you.
Susie Drake.
Susie Drake, Pendel, Nishamani High School teacher, taxpayer alum, union rep. I'm here actually just advertising an event tomorrow night. The League of Women Voters is moderating and sponsoring a candidate forum for the first time in my knowledge in our school board's history with six of the seven candidates participating. The one had a conflict. It's tomorrow evening at Tewanka. Doors open at 7:00. The event starts at 7:30. Come out, meet the people, get to know who's going to be sitting in these seats after some of them are vacated. And just as an alum and a sister of a proud bando, I can say, in my years in Nishamani, I remember this uniform going way, way back. I have a lot of years in Nishamani. I know Mr. Congdon and my sister were bandmates together, and I've seen these uniforms up close. And our kids, I mean, they just exhibited, you know, their style, their grace, and their Nishamani pride in Hawaii this week. And they're there every Friday night. I've been there in the pouring rain when the football teams huddled, and they're still playing and trying to rally the forces to support the team. So I wholeheartedly support my tax dollars going to pay for band uniforms. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move into Section 2, Routine Matters. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Minutes, Treasurers Report, Check Register, and Procurement Card Purchases, Bids, Investments, and Exonerations. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Ms. Hollenback, thank you for the second. Any questions, comments, or concerns on Items 2.01 through 2.06? Be it there or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I believe it passes 8-0. At this time, we're going to move to Personnel for Certificated. I'd like to make a motion to approve the retirements, resignations, leaves of absence, appointments, co-curricular resignations, and co-curricular appointments, Items 3.01 through 3.05. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Feather with a second. Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Be it there or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 8-0. We're going to move to the Personnel Support. Ms. Hollenback, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Items 4.01 through 4.05, retirements, resignations, leaves of absences, return from leave, appointments, and ancillary appointments.
Thank you, Ms. Hollenback. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Sullivan with the second. Thank you. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Be it there or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 8-0. Going to move to Business Operations. Ms. Hollenback, once again, please.
Do you want me to read these separate since we have the, or can I?
It's okay. It's on there agenda.
Okay.
It's all there.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 5.01, the Bucks County Technical High School budget for 2017-18, as well as 5.02 for Sunday facilities usage.
Thank you for that motion. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Feather with the second. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Tech school.
Well, yeah, I'll get to that. Mr. Rudy, do you have any, I guess, summary of the tech school budget and the percentages and whatnot, and how they did this year?
No, I didn't bring that, any of that info. I wasn't aware we would be looking at that. I do, I know what we've done. This is, I believe, what, 140,000 less than last, the last, you know, 140,000 less than last year's budget. As you know, they work on two-year arrears, so the students, obviously, two years ago, we had a couple less than we did, a number less than we did last year, so basically, it was a 2.5% raise. So beyond that, it was a number of students less than we had two years ago that basically took care, that lowered it to 149,000 or 140,000. So that's where we're at now.
Okay. Maybe Ms. Markowitz, you can help us out. The total budget for the Bucks County Technical High School, do you have the figures on the percent increase of the total budget this year? And I apologize, I should have sent you these questions earlier.
The total, the total budget for their fixed costs, I don't have, I have, we're 24.2% of their fixed cost. I don't have the increase from last year.
I was in a meeting with superintendents, the districts that compose the lower Bucks County area, and we talk about vocational issues as well as other common areas of interest. And in that meeting, the same thing that Mr. Rudy's indicating is that the budget increased by that same Act 1, 2.5% increase, so that we would have experienced that much of an increase, except for the fact that the students' number, the count, goes back and it is a few less. So therefore, there's a decrease for us, though ultimately, the actual budget, as you're asking, does increase overall for the tech school. We're just not sharing as much of it this upcoming year.
Okay, and what we're voting on this evening, I want to clarify, this is the proposed budget?
Yeah, final. Is it proposed or final?
Final.
This is the final, final budget?
Final.
Because the documents that we have is the proposed budget.
It's final. Proposed to be final. It's final. And Mr. Congdon is correct. It's proposed.
Because the budget that I had to review was a proposed budget.
I asked that specific question when this came up at the meeting at the tech board, and they said this was the final.
Okay. Because I have it.
Yeah, they must have mislabeled it.
Yeah, because it's the final.
Well...
This is the correct one, and they didn't just give us the wrong one by mistake, even if...
This is the official record, so it's got to be the right one.
Yeah, like I said, I mean, we have...
We went over the numbers at the meeting briefly, and I wasn't at that finance meeting, I'm not on that committee, but this was proposed and accepted unanimously by the board.
I'm on the... It was, and we have a certification in there to certify the final budget. Right. So it's in, we have the documents.
But I believe our president's concern is, is there's an official motion in front of the board that is labeled "proposed" when it might actually be "final," and this is the vote of record. So I would ask our solicitor to clarify the motion, if Mr. Congdon feels that's required.
I just want to clarify that the actual resolution doesn't reference the word "proposed," and it actually speaks to the numbers that are there, a budget and the total amount of X dollars, and our contribution in terms of Y. So, you know, we do have an attachment there for clarity in terms of what those numbers kind of correlate to, but the actual resolution itself doesn't use the word "proposed."
Right, and they're on the same schedule as us, correct? With their budgets? I mean, they have to finalize a budget by June 30th, correct? You know, I'm looking, like I said, at a document that says "proposed budget" on it. You know, and I understand that the, from the years of being on the tech school, that there is a formula, and if you try, it's pretty close to understanding Calc 1, 2, 3, and 4 all at the same time. Calculus, it's very involved, but I drudge through it, and it does make sense. I feel, even though it's two years out, you're paying for students, you know, that were there two years ago. I think it's a fair formula that they use, but what I'm getting at is, I'm looking at a budget here that was a proposed budget. Now, I want to see a final budget proposal where it shows, you know, what they're going to be spending on, you know, the full budget. I want to, I want to review the full budget.
Why don't, why don't, why isn't this board table this motion?
That's what I'm thinking.
And then we can get the clarity from the tech school. This is part of a process where all boards who are participating as members of this conglomerate here, this consortium, are required by the bylaws to vote on their final budget each year. And so you're, and this is one of the things that you and Mrs. Markowitz were talking about, is it's actually a roll-call vote, and then they count how many districts pass the budget and how many individual board members. There's kind of like a double counting that takes place. So it's really important for them to get it, but let's do it right. Why don't we just make a motion to table that? I would recommend at this point, because we can get the clarity in time for a future meeting.
Yeah, and from past experiences with the tech school budget, going back a few years back, I can remember not approving a tech school budget in the beginning of June and having them go back and sharpen their pencils. I'd like to get a full review of the budget, you know, while here at Nishamani, we're fighting to, you know, reduce tax increases and try not to tax increase, but, you know, we're trying to do our due diligence to keep our budget fair, not only for our taxpayers, but to make sure that our children have a good education. I want to make sure that we're not approving a budget here that is going to be throwing a 20% increase on certain items that we don't feel are necessary throughout their budget. We're cutting corners, you know, and trying to minimize our expenditures, and I want to make sure they're doing the same. So I'd like to see a final budget instead of a proposed budget.
So I would make a motion, then, to table Item 5.01.
Thank you for the motion. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Ms. Boyle, thank you for the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We'll table that 8-0.
But it has to be the final 5.02?
Yes, but before we go any further, John, do we, the motion that was just tabled, that'll be started from the beginning again. We don't have to start from where we were at, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So if you could, please read a new motion just for that item.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 5.02, Sunday Facilities Usage. Do you want me to read the red part now?
No, we're good. That's fine. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
That was a tie, but we're going to go with Mr. Feather. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Be it there or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 8-0. And, you know, just getting back on that topic, I, you know, we're in the beginning of April. I can't see any school district having an approved budget in the beginning of April for the following year, so that's why I said, it just didn't make sense to me to see the word "proposed" on the documents there. All right. At this time, does anybody have any other board business? Be it there or none, we're going to move to our second portion of public comment. Once again, we're going to limit it to three minutes. Please state your name, area reside, your profession. Please no personal attacks. And we don't have a list for the second session, so you can approach the podium if you'd like to speak.
Good evening. My name is Adam Kovitz. I live in Levittown, and I am a digital marketing consultant. So I was here a few weeks ago, again, to mirror the superintendent's announcement about the STEAM Expo. I have, I have three sons that are in the district. One in particular is quite inquisitive. He's a freshman right now at Nishamani High School, reads at the 12th grade level, and is saving up his money so he can go to, so he can go to Community College over the summer and take Algebra II, just so he can take pre-calc as a sophomore. Honors pre-calc with a few of his other cool friends. He's always been an inquisitive child, always very much into science, technology, engineering, art, and math. Hopefully, there are other parents out there who have similar children. This STEAM Expo is one of the best things that, that this school does for those kids who have that interest. And it extends beyond regular school hours. It's sort of like a little mini World's Fair, and you just simply cannot do everything in that two-hour time, but I encourage all parents to come on out. Also, you, superintendent, mentioned some of the summer programs. One of the other things that was really good for my son was the STEM program that they put on for robotics. So I strongly encourage children of, children of the district to look at that over the summer as well. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? All right. At this time, we're going to move to Board Comment. Anybody have any Board Comment?
Just because Mr. Condon was looking at me. Now, to our, to our band parents, you were here a couple months ago. We heard you. I think I said we heard you then, we hear you now. And I want you to know at the last budget meeting, I believe we had a brief discussion about band uniforms in the budget. So I see what the competition looks like, and I see what we're currently quipping our kids with. And I think you're right, they deserve better. They've earned it. So I know everybody on this board is going to work hard to see if we can make that happen for you. Not that many people would be excited about this, but on our investments this month, we almost have an investment that's going to make 1% interest. I just, you know, think that's, you know, just something we've been striving for, so it's, it's almost up there. So hopefully, we can do better. And I'm just really happy about the Chromebooks project. I know that was a grant we received, and we plan on doing more in the future, but it's great to see that they finally got out. And thank you to all the staff that worked so hard to get that implemented quickly. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Steve. And with that being said, I know my name was mentioned. I was a proud member of the Nishamani marching band as well. I traveled to Hawaii as well. I don't want to tell you what year, but it was in the 80s. I don't know what happened, but the new uniforms look nice. The uniform on the right, which I assume is the present uniform, looks beautiful compared to what we wore. We were from the Grand Pooh Box. We had things called buzzbees we wore on our heads, so they were, they were pretty extravagant. But, you know, this board has been talking about the uniforms. You know, we're looking at the budget hard, and, you know, I know what it was like with the wool uniforms and the straps to adjust them, and wearing pants that were 10 sizes too big or too large and trying to jump down off a podium after playing, and, you know, it was just something that you want these things to fit and be active for the children. And we are definitely thinking hard about it. With that being said, though, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Can I get a second, please? Mr. Sullivan with a second. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you, everyone, and good night.